I will, I will call the January twenty-fourth Planning Commission Work Session to Order. Heather, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Mr. Cale?
Here.
Mr. Tarly?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Ms. Leebel?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Okay, thank you. This is a work session. This is our annual CIP work session. And the entertainment is fully up to, up to staff. So, Mr. Trevitt, will you be presenting? I don't know if Ms. Griffin has anything for us, or it's all you.
Well, they gave me the receipt.
Oh, I can sit down?
Yeah.
Was he relegated to five minutes?
As long as we can hear you. I do have-
I like the sound of that. Only have five minutes, Mr. Chair.
Five minutes will be fine.
I'm sorry, I was coming in right at the bell. I was attending the library board meeting and giving them a similar update specific to the library project. So, I don't have any fancy PowerPoint today. I thought what we would do is, is a pretty simple approach to this. I thought what we'd start with is going over last year's letter from the Planning Commission regarding what you'd like to see in the CIP and talk specifically to those requests for a minute, and then hit some highlights from the memo that I think was shared in your agenda packet. And then, of course, answer any questions to the extent that I can. Does that sound sufficient, Mr. Chair?
Sounds good. Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
So, we start off with safety improvements, and I think the very first request was from Mr. Tarly regarding Merrimack Trail. And we did look at what needed to be done there. And essentially, we have a twenty-year-old strategic plan, if you want to call it that, that directly addresses that issue. Our initial estimates are that to do what needs to be done, we're looking at a seven-figure investment. And we are working on exactly what all that needs to be. As you mentioned, last year, you talked a little bit about the bridge, and that, of course, really heightens the cost of doing this correctly. And the city of Williamsburg tries to only do things correctly, so we would prefer to fund it when we have what we need. In addition to sort of considering the cost of all that is the fact that we are in the process right now of doing the Capital Landing Road corridor redesign. And so, there is some thought to wait and make sure that that process plays out the way that it is designed and see how that might impact what we think the flow of traffic would be between Capital Landing Road and Merrimack Trail, particularly at the point. So, that's, that's the status of that project. I would expect that in this year's CIP, there might be some planning money related specifically to the Merrimack Trail piece. Matthew Whaley to North Henry Street. Again, we were working in that project. I don't know if you saw in the update memo, there's a project related specifically to the pathway between Matthew Whaley and the Governor's Palace. That's not directly related to safety along Matthew Whaley and North Henry. But it does help us begin the process of improving that thoroughfare. As far as safety improvements go, when we look at North Henry to Matthew Whaley, I'm not exactly sure what the Planning Commission envisioned needing to be done there. We do have a complete sidewalk and that kind of thing, so I think we probably need a little bit more detail about what the Commission thought we should try. On Millneck Road, we talked a lot about the S-curve there, and that has been a conversation. I'm sure you all know there's the Neighborhood Council of Williamsburg, happens monthly on a Saturday morning. And this comes up pretty regularly now at those meetings, a request for something, whether it be a guardrail, or a sidewalk, or a convex mirror. And we've investigated almost all of those. We're currently considering what a guardrail might do and how that might work. But there's no clear solution. Obviously, as I said last year, the best solution is a sidewalk. But I don't know that the neighbors are ready or won't even want that, because it's a very different type of character to the neighborhood. So, any questions about those safety improvements before we move on?
I just want to note on the Merrimack Trail, there's also the area where the sidewalk ends.
Mm-hmm.
The safety feature. Is that, it ends at the area where it almost ties into Capital Landing?
Right. Yep. And that's, I think that's what we want to know is, you know, the city owns the corner there. And it's always been our sort of expectation that as the Capital Landing and corridor redevelops, the interest in that property will intensify, and some use will come forward. And it's likely that that use will want connectivity from a pedestrian standpoint between the two. And so, I think that's the question is, what are we doing there? And I can tell you that as part of the Capital Landing Road redesign, the staff has always wanted the space underneath the high-voltage lines to be used for something. And there are restrictions, what you can do under those lines, but there's a lot of things that you can do. And so, how that becomes used space may also impact what we would do. As you said, I think it was booked by the title where the sidewalk ends.
I'll chime in on the S-curve. That goes back to a comment that I made some years ago. For, for me, the, the big problem isn't keeping cars on the road, it's keeping pedestrians out of the road.
Right.
And so, if there's, I don't know that a, a concrete sidewalk, but maybe a, a wooden, I guess I've envisioned a wooden footpath along the edge of that so that pedestrians can safely make it up that S-curve without going into the road, forcing the cars into oncoming traffic. That's, that's the objective there, and certainly not something going all the way up Millneck Road, just to get them through this S-curve, which is so blind. So, that, that's what that was envisioned in my mind for these many years. Especially if we're going to expand the walkability of College Woods, more people will want to get to those trails in College Woods. So.
Sure. Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
You know, I think just philosophically, we don't like to create sidewalks that don't have a destination and a connectivity. And I think that's, that's a large part of the reservation, but let us look at it again and see.
I figured it would dump into the woods.
Yeah, and I know that-
As you get up the hill, it would connect to a, a trail, a, a footpath in the woods, which would be part of that system, because that's what people are doing. They're going up there and getting on the trail.
Right.
Which would get them off Jamestown, off Millneck Road sooner.
Yeah.
So, that's the thought process.
And let us, let us look at it. The, the College of William &amp; Mary is not thrilled about people being in College Woods anyway because of the liability. So, let us look at it and see what's possible.
Right.
I don't disagree. I mean, you know, I live in the neighborhood, if you want to call it that, and, and I live across the street, so I don't really get to claim to live in Greg's neighborhood. But when Ally was pregnant, we've walked that stretch a lot, and, and it is concerning. I won't say it's scary or dangerous, but it can be concerning. All right. Next is school capacity. And obviously, this is a topic of tremendous interest with the City Council at the moment, what to do about the school system generally. So, I won't spend a lot of time on this. Obviously, there's a, a large project underway that has to do with the school system. We expect it to be, I'm not sure what the word is, wrapped up, concluded in the very near future, certainly in 2024. The study that the, the Council commissioned on the school system and our participation in it is expected to be delivered in January. And then, the process of a draft review will begin internally. And once that's done, there'll be a public presentation of the completed draft, and, and then an announcement of a public process to participate in what that draft says, to further refine the content before the study itself is actually considered finalized. And it won't be until that point that the City Council and the city generally begins to decide whether or not an action should be taken. So, if there are any specific questions about school capacity, I'm happy to do my best to try and answer them.
I think the, I think the learning cottages were the, the issue that, you know, that, that kept coming up. We kept being asked to approve those, reapprove those, and I think that's really the bigger, the bigger concern and whether the, the split, the proposed split, will address that or not.
Yeah, and-
Has to be taken into account.
So, it does and it doesn't, obviously, right? I mean, deciding to operate our own school district gives the City Council a great, more degree of flexibility to address that issue specifically. Being in the joint system and being the minority funder, there's only so much that we can do to influence the decisions that are made. And the decision about where, how, where and how to, to use and/or eliminate learning cottages is part of a more, much larger educational philosophy discussion that the School Board and the, the funding partners have to have. And right now, the School Board and the county, the county are very focused on adding pre-K space, which will alleviate capacity issues at some schools and maybe somewhat at Matthew Whaley, but it will not eliminate the need for the learning cottages. Any other questions about that one? The Civic Center redevelopment, and this is something that the Planning Commission has asked for for some time, and I can, I apologize, it's taken us a long time to, to answer this call. The desire is to have a, as I understand it, a master plan, a comprehensive review of the redevelopment activity that's occurring, particularly focused on City Square and the library and, and this section of town. And it probably makes sense, from my perspective, to expand that a little bit to include what we consider to be the municipal campus across the street and the relocation of the Police Department. And so, what we are doing is, in the last year, we, we began a process of signing up a whole host of on-call consultants to do various work that relate to public works projects, and some of those are design firms. And so, we're going to reach out to one of those and see if they will take on this work for a relatively inexpensive cost. I don't think this has to be terribly elaborate. The last time this was done was by former manager Tuttle, and we've largely been following that plan. And I don't expect a lot to change, because the pieces largely have to fall where they have to fall. I think the real value of this is in looking at what's possible, particularly on this block, as the police station gets demolished and a new library is considered somewhere on the footprint. And, you know, does it tie into the Striker Center? Does it not? Many of those questions will be answered in a library RFP process that is imminent. So, it may be that we also look at this and decide to continue to hold the master plan process until we get those submissions back and see how they might inform our thinking about what's going to happen in City Square.
I think you skipped affordable housing.
Oh, did I? I didn't mean to. Yes, affordable housing. Affordable housing, the workforce, or the Affordable Housing Work Group presented a whole host of recommendations, and many of them were duplicates from the work, the Neighborhood Balance Group. And we are, in government fashion, working through the list of things that we can do. Much of that work happens behind the scenes. A good example is that there is an item on the list, going from memory, direct loans. And so, the thought there would be that the city would create some fund of money and partner with a financial institution to make that small amount of money go further and ask that institution to help us build a program that would result in direct loans to people to help offset the cost of entering the housing market in Williamsburg, which is costly. We've had initial meetings with a couple of different banks and not been satisfied with the programs that they would like to offer, because they don't really address our need. And so, we're still looking at how can we partner with the bank to make our money go as far, as far as possible. I think one of the issues is that when you put together the money to fund something like that, it's very easy for it to go away quickly, and there not to be a whole lot of result shown, because our market is just so expensive. And so, it's, I think it's, it's critically important for the success of that program that we find a way to amplify whatever money the city might put into the effort. And so, that's, that's where we stand on a direct loan program.
So, is that, that's the, the, like, the trust fund that Mayor Pons has talked about? Is that, was that, I think he used the-
No, I'm going to talk to that next.
That's something different. Okay.
I think really that the big effort in affordable housing in the last, was it last year or the year before? I can't remember, is the City Council out of the, we affectionately call it ARPA, not ARPA, but the money that was associated with the ARPA awards that came to the city, the Council set aside $900,000 for affordable housing initiatives. And that really became the beginning of an affordable housing fund that a lot of communities have. Now, typically, in communities that have an affordable housing fund like that, it is largely funded and then refunded by development fees, either in the form of an affordable housing fee that's attached to building permits or in donations that are made to satisfy affordable housing requirements and zoning ordinance as a part of a rezoning or a special use permit. And it's interesting, because we never really had that fund. The City Council created it using the ARPA money, and suddenly, we had a host of residential development projects proposed that decided to offer contributions to an affordable housing fund. And you've heard many of those already. If those projects move forward, and I have no idea if they will, there will be additional money contributed to that $900,000. The good news about that is, many of the projects that were identified by the Affordable Housing Work Group were projects that required city investment. And so, that gives us a large cash, well, I say large, but in the concept of building housing or even working on affordable housing programs, it's really not that large. But it does give us a good seed fund to begin those initiatives. I had a conversation just over this week with the City Council, and many of them said, "What do we do with affordable housing next?" And I think that, you know, programs are great, but most of the experts will tell you that it's about product development right now, because that's the fastest way to deliver it. And in Williamsburg, that's very challenging, because we just don't have a lot of developable space. And historically, local governments are not great at residential development. And so, I think it's important that we look for other ways to satisfy that need and be creative in the inventory that's out there. And so, I'm, I'm excited for what is possible, and I think, you know, in the next year, we'll probably have significant progress on this front. Additionally, I would say one more thing about affordable housing, and that is, I think that one of the things that I sort of focus on is the possibility or existence of a gap between principles and practice. And so, it's very easy for a local government to say, "We want affordable housing," and then not actually do it. And I think in the city's case, I'm extremely proud that the City Council has taken every opportunity to do it. And that's, the case in point is, if you looked at the memo on things that are pending and underway in the CIP, there's a discussion of the city's workforce housing program. We've grown that now from what was initially four houses to twelve houses, all of them occupied. And as I do initial discussions with employees who've just been hired, I can't tell you how many times the employee says, "The reason I came to work here was because of the possibility of being in that program, not even the guarantee." So, I think we're making progress, and I'm excited to see what comes next. Broadband. The most current update to this is that I believe, and I think the City Council does as well, broadband service to a locality is the next public utility. I just, that's almost a certainty. I mean, it's just too much a part of what all of us do every single day, regardless of what your career might be or your station in life. And so, that is coming, and I think the more that we can do to be prepared for that, the better. So, related to broadband, we were successful in getting another competitor company to come into the market, and they're underway right now installing the fiber-to-the-user line, so it's a slightly different service model. And I'm excited to see what that brings in terms of competition to what has been our monopoly provider. And I think that the City Council, at the same time, has began to focus on cellular service, because obviously, I have said too, I think that the, the future of broadband is wireless. There's somebody a lot more famous than me who says, "We don't need wires anymore," right? And so, to that end, we currently have a study underway with Crown Castle, who, I don't know if you're familiar with them, but they build towers essentially. They're, they're probably the foremost tower constructor in the country. And we've asked them to do an analysis of the propagation fields in the city related to cellular, because we get a lot of complaints, and you all have cell phones and probably have had those complaints. And so, we've gotten initial results back. We've asked for some fine-tuning of that. Once we have it, it'll basically be a heat map that shows us where service is good and where service is bad in a much more reasonable fashion than just the anecdotal evidence. And then, we can present to City Council some staff ideas that we already have on what we might do to fix that, address it, improve upon it. And it's going to be interesting, because there are lots of different models out there, including us doing our own thing. I don't know that that's a good idea, but it's probably easier to do that than to convince the carriers to come in and solve the problem for us. So, I think, again, we're making some really solid progress on broadband. Stormwater management is a constant thing that we are fighting with. If you looked at the, the memorandum, there are lots of stormwater projects listed there. And if you looked maybe three years back, there were none. And that's just sort of indicative of the fact that a lot of these stormwater outflows get constructed and then not really updated. And so, we're catching up now. We've been really fortunate that the return of what used to be earmarks at the federal level, now called community assistance grants, I think. We've been really successful in getting funding for some of these stormwater projects through that process. The downside to that is, the federal government is even slower than local government. And so, you have to wait, even after the award, you have to wait sometimes years to get the money. And so, that is the delay in all these projects, most of which are funded by federal funding. So. I think that's the end of the letter from last year. Is there any specific questions about that?
Any questions for anyone?
Okay. I went through the CIP memo from '24 that the, the Finance Director has drafted, and my intention was only to pick out three or four projects to talk about. And I ended up highlighting pretty much every single one of them, just because, you know, I guess we're near the city manager, they're all important. So, I'm going to go through what I've highlighted and try to do it quickly, some of which I've already talked about. We'll start on page one, the Historic Area Streets. This is the improvement to the Nassau Meadow BNP, which sounds really boring, and I just want to highlight that for a minute. That's a partnership with Cologne Williamsburg Foundation to improve that BNP on the right side, if you're going toward the palace, along that footpath between Matthew Whaley and the palace. And while that sounds like a really boring project, the excitement is, it's going to improve that pathway, but even more importantly, improve the water quality of what used to be the Governor's canals. And it is CW's intent to begin programming and interpreting those canals once that improvement is done. So, I don't know how much time you all spend in the, the Governor's Palace Garden, but that's going to be a really rich improvement for our downtown. Capital Landing Road and Bypass Road intersection, that is a double project. It's on the next page, too, the Capital Landing Road redesign. There's two projects worked together at the same time, and they're both happening right now. The intersection is a little bit behind, because it's, it comes last, but it's in design right now. We're actually in the process of acquiring property. And the Capital Landing Road redesign utility process is underway. A big part of that project, particularly the expenses to underground as much as we can, and so, that process is underway right now. And so, while it doesn't seem like there's much happening, it actually is quite a bit going on on that. Monticello Avenue, Richmond Road, Lafayette Street roundabout. I wanted to make sure I talked about this, because my biggest fear, and I mean that, one of, one of my biggest fears in this job is that Williamsburg one day is going to wake up and there's going to be a roundabout at that intersection, and everybody's going to say, "How did this happen?" And the reason I'm concerned about that is because in typical government project fashion, we had a lot of discussion about it years ago, when we decided to submit it as a project for funding, and it was approved. And then, it lays in wait until the funding becomes available, and we're coming up on that. So, the engineering for this project is underway right now. So, we are designing a roundabout for that intersection that will be constructed. So, I just, again, I'm trying to make sure people stay aware of that. If it stays on the schedule it is right now, construction begin, could begin in 2026. So, coming soon, a roundabout.
Will there be publication and-
Yeah, so we, we-
Teaching the public on this?
We have tried multiple times to, to make sure this becomes a, a public awareness piece. Not so many months ago, we did a whole thing with the City Council. We had a couple of public meetings to bring this back to the forefront, to, to make sure that we wanted to continue down the path. And the decision was to proceed, so that's, that's what we're doing. But again, I just want to try to keep it on the forefront of people's vision so that you don't drive through the intersection one day and go, "Hey, where did this come from?" So.
Have you called it into the last word?
That's a good idea, Chair. It seemed to be what people read.
Well, you know, they, obviously, it's above our pay grade on the effectiveness of them, but the, the one that's out on Long Hill Road, as you approach Old Town, is very effective. It's made that road safer.
Yes.
Because you have the, the intersections coming out, blind hills and everything, and traffic moves through there surprisingly well.
Yeah, and that's what will happen here.
That's James City County, too.
The VDOT project, no less. In this situation, I, I expect the outcome, the, the, the process will be really similar. If you followed that particular project, the last word was rife with, "This is awful. It's the end of days. I can't believe this is happening." And now, I think those same people probably would say, "You know, really, this is not so bad, because I don't have to stop anymore." In our case, the way that Lafayette comes in and intersects with Richmond doesn't give us a lot of queuing space anyway. And so, if you've ever been on Lafayette toward the end of the day, that can be traffic for Williamsburg, right? And this will probably solve that completely. And I think really give us the opportunity to have a great sort of important landmark feature at a very busy intersection in the city. So, I'm excited to see how it turns out. The next one I had was the Prince George Street Outdoor Dining. You guys have been really involved in this, and I just wanted to highlight that we're getting close to the end of that project. I think the Public Works Department, who's done the work in-house, has just done unbelievable job. The improvement to Prince George Street from what we had, let alone the now providing outdoor seating for those restaurants, has just been, I think, a, a great thing. And so, if you wanted to look at what was positive from the pandemic, I think the outdoor seating changes that we made in the city were, were big among them. Golf cart community. Again, this is one that I don't want to sneak up on people. This is something that, that we have been talking about for a long time. There's a small but mighty contingent in the community that thinks this is a great idea and a good way to, to resolve some of our traffic as well as parking concerns. And so, we are working on what does this look like? Now, that does not mean that there's going to be golf carts driving on the street legally tomorrow. It just means we're looking at, how could we do that so that we can present a plan for people to react to? So, we're working on an ordinance and a policy on how to regulate the use that we will then bring forward in a public fashion and let people comment on and provide input, and we can decide, do we think this is right for Williamsburg or not? Maybe it is, maybe it's not, maybe it's only right in certain spaces. That's the kind of thing that we need to evaluate. The city has been really fortunate to have William &amp; Mary in our backyard, obviously. One of the things that we have grown in the last few years has been our partnership with their internship programs. And the Charles Center has been great. We now have a program that I'm particularly proud of. It's called the City Research Scholars. And those are largely graduate students that come in and take on research projects to help advance our thinking without us having to devote staff to it. And one of those students, starting in the summer, is going to be working on this particular project. So, I'm hopeful that at the end of that student's period with us over the summer, we will have a complete ordinance, a program designed that we can begin the public process on. Next, I want to talk about the Highland Park CDBG, because this is a major, major project. The Highland Park Community Association has, for a long time, as I understand it, asked for sidewalk improvements and traditional storm sewer gutter, curb and gutter-type treatments. And so, we began budgeting for looking at that project. And I say it in those sort of odd terms, "Looking at the project," because you all know, with a project like that, it's a very work-intensive, impactful project for the neighborhood. And many times, people ask for this, not realizing what the cost is going to be. And I don't mean financially. I mean the cost in terms of their front yard and disturbance to their life for a period of time. Because to put in a storm sewer, you're, you're digging down pretty deep. It's got to be pretty wide. And then, you're putting it back and putting the, the curb and the gutter on the top of it. And so, we have to first figure out what this would look like so that we can take the plan to the community and make sure that that's really what they're asking for. So, that's the process that we're undergoing. I'm excited about it, because really, I think that one of the things that this city needs to focus more on is sidewalks in neighborhoods where they want them. And so, I, I'm excited to see us at least present this project to the neighborhood and see if they want us to proceed. I've talked about the Capital Landing Road redesign. Lafayette Street reconstruction ties right in with the roundabout. The timeline is going to work out to be about the same. That project is designed to improve the experience for the driver and the pedestrians along Capital, along Lafayette Street. The work is designed to fit within the existing right-of-way, so we're not planning to expand it. And one caveat to that is, it does include a multi-use trail. And one caveat to that is it does include a multi-use trail on one side. And whether or not we can fit that within our right-of-way, the entire distance, we're not quite sure. And so we're going to have to see how that actually works.
Would y'all remove parking from Lafayette Street?
We're going to lose some parking, but not a lot of it. The intent is not to lose, I hope I'm not getting this wrong, but I don't think the intent is to lose parking along what is now the residential piece. But the parking where the city is currently doing permit parking for our employees, that probably does go away. There's probably not a way to fit this multi-use path there without impacting that. Curbless Boundary Street. You know, I talk a lot about studies and things and efforts that come in, and a lot of people probably think we get those studies done, then we never do anything. And it's not that, it just takes us a while to work through all the recommendations. So the Curbless Boundary was a recommendation of downtown vibrancy study, and it's taken a long time for us to, A, figure out how to do it in a cost-effective way, and now, B, plan for the work. The idea here is to make there not be a curb drop between the library's plaza and the community building's lawn. And that would facilitate even more activity in terms of events and things right there a little bit more seamlessly. So that's another project that is on the horizon. Here's a project that is important to a lot of people, Newport Avenue sidewalks. I'm sure you all have heard from neighbors along Newport Avenue about this. I certainly hear about it quite frequently. They would like to have a sidewalk, but there is not agreement on what that should be. And like you just pointed out, Mr. Granger, the sometimes putting in a sidewalk results in the loss of a yard or a loss of a parking space. And if it's your yard or your parking space, you don't like the idea. So what we're doing right now is working on two different designs that will be possibilities. We plan to then have a community meeting with the Newport Avenue residents and present these two. Hopefully, there will be at least a majority support for one or the other, and we can proceed with that project. We really hope in the spring of '24. We've had this money in the CIP for a long time. We'd like to see the project get completed, so.
Does that include Griffin or not?
I'm sorry?
Does it include Griffin?
It does not. Griffin is.
That's tricky.
Griffin is exactly the kind of street situation we're trying to avoid creating. It'd be a lot easier to put in a sidewalk on Newport Avenue if we didn't mind the type of traffic pattern we have on Griffin. But in traffic engineering, we try not to make a situation worse. And so creating an unofficial one-way street is dangerous. And so we're trying our best to avoid that. Similarly, South Henry Street Sidewalk to the Oaks, that's a very important project to the folks that live in the Oaks, and it's an important project to us. However, it is very expensive. It's a long stretch of roadway to cover. It also needs to be lit, and so we're budgeting small increments to sort of inch our way there. We are looking at doing some construction on some pieces of that in '26. I don't know if that will be a contractor or an in-house project. We have done some pretty long sidewalk stretches in-house lately, and so I think we're getting a lot better at it. And I think it's possible that we'll do that ourselves, which will help us go a little further because the cost will be less.
And the bridge is the main problem there?
I don't think so. I mean, our initial review of design, there's enough right-of-way, we should be able to fit that in. That's a pretty wide stretch of road. Let's see.
Can we stick with pedestrian and bicycle improvement section?
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, point of order, for suggestions as that would go into our letter, do you want to wait till the end?
I think we'd go ahead and do them now as we go.
All right, so first, B, the College Woods Circuit Shared Use Trail. I'm assuming that's Strawberry Plains Road?
There are different components of it. There is the Strawberry Plains Road piece. There's also the Berkeley to Berkeley piece is, I think, what you're referring to. That's the next piece to be done.
Well, the area where there is no.
Right.
Sidewalk at all.
From Berkeley Elementary to Berkeley Drive Street Road, I'm not sure.
Goes all the way up to the Bad Intersection.
Right.
199.
Yes, right. And so we have the funding, I believe, that we were granted that money for that project.
I know the complications there because you've got BDOT.
Yep.
JCC on the other side and College Woods. But that's one that certainly we discussed in the past, and I think I just wanted to confirm or have clarification that that includes, that circuit is that that goes from?
Yes, yes, it does. Yeah, that's a product where we divided it up into pieces because we want to come all the way around College Woods and then connect down to town. But the next one to be done is the section that we call Berkeley to Berkeley. So from Berkeley Middle School to?
Street Drive Road Berkeley?
I can't recall.
Governor Berkeley Road?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanted just, you know, to put in the mixing pot is the entrance corridor on Jamestown Road as far as pedestrian and bicycle safety. Speed limit issues, the sidewalk size, the bike lanes. If you use the fictional eight-year-old kid riding his bike down to Cologne Williamsburg, is that safe? No. And so we've always taken that as it's beautiful, and it is with the trees overhanging, but from a safety standpoint, and really from an aesthetic standpoint, it looks like a highway as opposed to an interest road. So I just had wanted to put that one in.
I'm glad you brought that up. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to give you an assignment as a planning commission. If you're going to talk about that, I would suggest that you help us talk about it. There was a plan, as I understand it, long before me, or at least a consideration, to reduce the number of lanes and use the space that that gives us to put in a proper separated, divided bike path, multi-use trail is what we would call it now. And there wasn't support for that then. But maybe that's a topic that you all could consider as part of your letter, if that's something that you think should be considered again?
Well, it was considered at the time when we did the repaving. And that was only within the last couple of years.
Was?
And I know in Holly Hills, where I live, there was a lot of support because a lot of those folks do walk and feel very unsafe on the sidewalk.
I've met with many of those folks on the street.
Yeah.
And since I live there and walk it, I don't disagree.
So the decision was made very recently not to do that.
It was.
Two years ago, right?
It was made not to do it, but not because it's a bad idea. I mean, we just decided that at that moment wasn't the time to have a public conversation about what we wanted to do because it was going to delay the project. We can restripe the road at any time. So it's a fairly inexpensive way to get a significant improvement. So I would just, if you all want to talk about Jamestown Road and doing some kind of improved facility for pedestrians and bikes, I would include that in your thoughts because it certainly will help it.
That was the reason I brought.
If the recommendation from the planning commission is to consider that.
Yeah, that was the reason I brought it up because I had discussed previously, I mean, even just something like what the city did at Second Street.
Right.
You know, it's a center turn lane and single lanes on each side and enhanced bike lanes and bigger sidewalks.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it would.
Everybody says that's beautiful.
And it still would be. I mean, even if we did this, it wouldn't change Jamestown Road. I mean, the great thing about doing it this way is you get a much improved facility without having to cut a single tree. I mean, it's really the best way to do it.
All right, thank you.
All right. See, in the next section, the Stormwater Management, we've talked about that, so I'll skip ahead. I did want to talk, this is a weird window highlight, but I did, under Recreation, Culture and Open Space, Remote Access to Bathrooms. The reason I bring that up is because the city really needs to add public restrooms in a couple of key places. Right now, as a good example, right now at our parks, if you participate in sports, we have to bring in porta toilets, and that's really not the experience I think the city of Williamsburg wants to provide, our residents or visitors. And the main question is, how do you keep a permanent restroom clean and safe? And now with modern technology, you can do that with remote access locks so that we can open and close them when we want them to be open and closed. And so I only bring that up because that's going to help us do bathroom projects across the city.
Well, I know you were excited about that one, and you wanted to jump ahead. But can I go back to Stormwater Management for a second? I know you talked about these projects, but we had a couple come up, recent rezoning requests that were in the coal lane and what's the?
Yes, my house.
What's the road over where the church is?
Mill Neck.
Mill Neck, yeah. And that's the outflow that goes down to College Creek, and there was some concern there, and disclosure, it goes behind my house. And so, you know, some of the concerns, you know, clearly with more impervious surface, there's more runoff, it comes through faster. And so has there been any discussion or something for us to include with respect to reviewing that particular watershed?
We have not talked about that one specifically. What we are talking about, and that's probably even too strong a term, but we occasionally discuss the city's policy on ditches and stormwater generally, and how we could maybe be a better partner with our residents on helping to maintain ditch lines and better manage the flow. As I said earlier, not everybody likes a sidewalk in front of their house, but one of the major benefits is if you do a real sidewalk, you've got a stormwater drain underneath it, and that's the best way for us to help control the flow and movement. So I think that that's something that we're talking about, but in many of these instances, and I can't say that I have any idea what the circumstances are with the drainage along that property, the Mill Neck property that's up for redevelopment. But very often, there are complicated agreements with the owners on who's responsible for what. And without knowing that, I would not want to really comment on it.
Right, right. I did, I saw Port Ann and Walnut Hills on here, so I just wondered.
Yep. On, under Parks and Recreation, still QuarterPath Park, our first public bathroom project is actually a QuarterPath. If you're a user of the QuarterPath facility, obviously we have restrooms inside, but there's nothing for the outside activities. And the fire that happened in the old farmer's market space gave us the opportunity to re-envision what we're doing with the existing facility. And so, you know, if you spend any time on QuarterPath, there's a locker room facility on the far side of the gym, and the exterior wall is shared with that locker room facility. Well, no one uses the locker rooms, hasn't in a long time. And so what we decided to do after the fire was to really look at, can we punch doors in the back wall and allow those restroom facilities to service the outside amenities? And the answer, of course, is yes, and this project will let us do that. And it brings us back to that remote locking system. Another project out of Highland Park is to replace the playground and fence. We've had a couple of public meetings with the Civic Association to talk about what their vision might be for the playground. I don't think that process is over because I don't think we got exactly the kind of feedback that we needed in terms of what the amenities might be. So that's something that we're still working on, but we're excited to see that project move ahead. Under Public Safety, obviously, we've completed the fire station across the street. We're wrapping up punch list items right now. The police station is next and is currently under review by the ARB, and we're excited to see that go before the Site Plan Committee, I believe in March, February? February. So we're excited to see that happen, and it's a much-needed project that's well past due and part of our reinvigorating public infrastructure. So that'll be a great process. That's a domino that has to fall for us to really dig into the library project. So I'm excited to see that one move ahead. That police station project, I often refer to it as an umbrella project because the police station is a component of it, and because of where the new police station is sited, it impacts the Public Works facilities. And so the Public Works facility gets a redo as a product of being impacted and losing some facilities to that space. So that's on the next page. You can see the Public Works Yard facilities. We've expanded that project considerably, and I'm glad for it, to include remodeling some of the existing Public Works shops. If you've probably not spent a lot of time behind a municipal building, but that complex back there is divided up into the functions or divisions of Public Works. And we've not spent a lot of money over the years keeping up with standards, and so they're going to get some improvements to bathrooms, they're going to get bigger fans to move the air when they're in there. So it's going to be a much nicer place for them to work out of. Under E on that same page, we have Waller Mill Training Facility, and that is a project that did not get funded, and I just, I wanted to make sure that that's known. So there's two projects that are back-to-back that deal with the firing range for the police department, and that training facility was one where we were hoping to identify and then apply for a grant, and we failed to do either one. There's just not a lot of money out there to do a firing range improvement of any kind of nature, and so it's made it difficult for that project to proceed. But we're still looking at ways that we can accomplish this. One of the projects that was left out of the MO, at least I couldn't find it, was the Fire Training Tower, and that's in the CIP and still part of our plan. I don't know if I've talked to you all about that before, but I'll just take a minute and then relate it to the firing range. Having a fire training tower helps us overcome one of the obstacles to retention of qualified firefighters. If you're joining a firefighting team, you, in today's modern age, you're most often asked to do two things, be a firefighter and a medical responder. And in my conversations with them, there aren't a whole lot that are really equally interested in both of those things, right? There's the firefighters, and then there's the medical responders. But in today's age, we ask them to do both. One of the things that a firefighter is usually interested in is, not surprisingly, having the opportunity to fight fire. And as we, as a society, get better at community risk and reduction of fire, there are less opportunities to do that. And the smaller your jurisdiction, the less likely that is. And in Williamsburg, we just don't have a lot of active fire, and I'm glad for that. But what it does translate to is we don't offer the type of excitement and training and growth for those professions that other localities do. So the way that we overcome that is to build a training facility that simulates that environment so that they can get that kind of training and experience that they want. The other thing that it helps us do is be ready when we do have that fire. And if it's your house, you want them to be as ready as they can be, of course. So having that training facility is going to be a big asset to us. The thing that we do right now is we actually take units out of service to send them to train, I believe it's in Newport News. And so that's not helpful to us if there's a need here in Williamsburg. So having a facility here would allow us to provide that service much more frequently and at our experience level. So it's a customized training environment. The other thing that it does, it gives that asset to the region because obviously if we're going to Newport News, so are York County and James City County to do the same training. And so there's opportunity to share costs, particularly on the operational side for that facility. As we look at where we might build that training tower, we think about maybe expanding it to be a training yard so that there's more space to do different things, that can practice vehicle extractions, et cetera. And the best place to put it probably is at Waller Mill where we have the water treatment plant. I mean, that's where we have the most space. It's not in the middle of somebody's neighborhood. It's probably a good spot. It's got good access to the city so they could get back if there was a problem and had to be called into service out of a training exercise. And if we put it out there, that's also very close to the fire, to the police department's firing range. And so maybe there's a chance to combine these two projects and do something in the same footprint and get both done at the same time. So hopefully, we'll see that move forward. I know the Fire Department is excited to have that new training opportunity. Cellular on Wheels on the next page, just briefly about that. There's two purposes to this. As I said earlier, we're in the middle of this propagation study with Crown Castle to look at cellular services. One of the things that I think we would be wise to do is, as we get those results back, rather than jumping into a solution, let's see if the solution we think will work will. And so having a mobile cellular tower would allow us to deploy it in a weak spot of the city and see if we can impact performance, right? We're not going to do another propagation study, but we could have Crown Castle come back in and audit their results. We can also take anecdotal data and see if we've made an impact. And so we are in the process right now of acquiring one, maybe two cellular on wheels devices. The first use, as I said, is checking to see how we could impact service, but also in major events, cellular service bandwidth becomes a strain, and one way to overcome that is to have a cellular on wheels device that you deploy. And then secondly, in an emergency, where cellular service is impacted, having a cowl, they're affectionately called, would allow us to deploy that and get services back up a lot faster within the city. So excited to have that asset. Under Community and Economic Development, I already mentioned, it says we have four housing units, it's actually up to 12. So we're glad to have those and have people living in them. WRHA Security, that project is actually already done. We have cameras now at all the sites, and that actually includes license plate readers at the entrances and exits. So much improved security at the public housing sites. Triangle Building storefront replacement, if you walked here today, and I hope you did because it's nice out, you probably walked by the Triangle Building. We're replacing all the storefronts. They were leaking and causing damage to the property, and so glad to see that get done. Under General Government, the very first project is renovation of the third floor municipal building, and it's got a big number there, $4.3 million. That's not accurate. That, that project is holding money that's associated with the umbrella that is the Police Department project. As we have grown in the service areas of the Finance Department and Human Services, we've outgrown the space allocated to them on the first floor of the municipal building. And so, in looking at all the different ways that we might free up space in the building, the best way to do that is to move the administrative function somewhere. Whether that's the third floor of the municipal building or the third floor of the soon-to-be-constructed police station is yet to be determined, but that's the best way to accomplish this space creation. So what we would do is move the back office of Finance into what is now the City Manager's Suite. IT would move out of the middle of the building on the first floor, which would allow Human Services to expand that whole distance. The reason that that's important is because they already have their service windows there, and that's where you come to get service from either option. And we don't want to divide it up and send staff here, there, and everywhere and have to direct people. So that's, that's that project. I don't know if this will progress or not. It's really a conversation we're having with the City Council about what they'd like to do and working through options and costs, but it is something that we're looking at. On the next page, bus stop improvements. This is something the Planning Department has undertaken. I hope it's been as informative for you all as it has been for us. I can tell you right now that when we talked about this with the City Council during our strategic planning process, I don't think anybody in the room had any idea we had over 70 bus stops in the city. And, you know, it's sort of like that game where you fill the jar up with a bunch of candies and have everybody guess how many. I'm pretty sure everybody would have guessed way lower than that. But it's exciting to know that we are working on a plan to standardize the amenities that are offered at each stop. And I really think in Williamsburg, we can do better than we are for those stops. Smart City Infrastructure, I hope you all have talked about this at least a little bit. This is important for the future of city government and particularly the services that we offer. As data becomes more and more available, the expectation is that decisions will be based on that data. And if you don't have a vehicle to collect it, then you can't base your decisions on it. So informed policy of the future is going to be based on data collection. And in order to do that, we have to have the equipment and infrastructure to do it. So you install gateways across the city. It works on a very low bandwidth, cellular bandwidth. It allows sensors of all kinds and varieties to communicate usage and capacity and all kinds of things, weather, back to the hub for data analysis. And so, we are investigating all the different types of technologies out there that would help us do that. One of the ones that I think is, that illustrates what's possible the best, is a sensor that you actually, you embed in the pavement of the road, and it goes down about that far, and it gives you temperature readings of the strata underneath the surface of the road as well as the surface, so that you can make an educated decision on when to put down brine, which actually is pretty expensive. And so, by installing six or seven sensors across the city, we could make a much better informed decision about when we're going to do that and when we're not. Downtown Fountain Feature is a project that has grown beyond that title. I think there was a vision that we needed sort of a large play area, particularly for kids, to enjoy downtown. And that has grown now into more of a children's park that includes that. And so, what we are doing in that regard is, there's a staff effort right now in-house to do some preliminary design of what could be, largely based on what we've seen from successful children's parks in other locations, tailoring it to our specific purpose. The idea is that once we have our vision and work with a property owner to site it downtown, we would go out and get professional design services to take that initial concept and really turn it into something that reflects City Williamsburg's characteristics. And the next section is Research Village. I just want to talk about these ARPA projects. This is a, in the, the concept of the ARPA money for the City Council following our process, our public process was, in many cases, to set up funding that would act as an attractant or seed funds for projects that we thought were worthwhile. And so, there's a Research Village idea to create some space over by the Visitor Center, bypass pasture area, that could be a good location for some office space, some residential, some, you know, sort of classic live, work, play space with high-wage jobs associated with technology and research. And so, we committed some money from that fund to help be an attractant, and it's really has worked. There's been a lot of conversation with William &amp; Mary about their data science degree program, a lot of conversation with Clonan-Winsburg about their desire to see those properties begin to produce some revenue. And so, I think there's some synergy that's happening, and it wouldn't surprise me if we don't see some activity with the Planning Commission regarding how to see that concept move forward. Amphitheater, similar plan was, we put a little bit of money away to attract some interest in an amphitheater. We were successful. We've had a couple of different developers come to town and sort of look at sites, particularly the Visitor Center associated with where we're going to do the Sports Center. And I really believe that project is going to get to a point where we just were with the Sports Center, where we have all of the information required for the elected officials to make an educated decision on whether or not we're going to proceed. So another exciting project. The last domino to fall, sort of in our public redevelopment scheme, is the Triangle redevelopment. So the Triangle Building site, as well as the Blatant Building site, are ripe for redevelopment. The Blatant Building is well past its useful life and needs to be replaced. And so, we envision that as the library project gets its feet under it, not meaning done or even constructed. It opens the door for us to look at what the options are for redeveloping those two city-owned locations. And so, I think that that's, that's a good step forward and exciting to see that project lift off, because that'll sort of be the end of redoing all this public infrastructure downtown. We've talked about the Affordable Housing Fund, as you can see there, the 950 that the Council has set aside. Again, I'm hopeful to see that grow and things spring out of it. One Williamsburg Projects, that's what we label projects for, improving programs, equipment inside city government. A good example of a project that we are working on that will be funded out of this is buying a knuckle boom truck. Again, that's something that probably most people never think about, but after a storm, when you have a lot of tree limbs down, maybe, and the application here is, a storm that doesn't reach the level of an emergency, where we would get federal assistance and everybody's out of power, but a storm bad enough that Mr. Tarly has 15, 20 limbs out there, and if nobody picks it up, he's going to have to pay to have somebody come get it. If we had a knuckle boom truck in those instances, we could come and get that and get rid of it a lot faster. A more everyday use is four times a year, move-in, move-out day. There'd be a lot of couches on the side of the road we could get rid of a lot faster. And so, excited to see us get this asset and improve that level of service for the citizens.
To that point, I was driving down Merrimack Trail today, and I saw a bunch of limbs and leaves and piles of debris. Is that the sort of thing?
Exactly, exactly, yes. And in the recent windstorm, you know, Public Works, we had, we had a couple of trees fall that blocked access to one of the pump houses. And fortunately, the pump house continued to operate, but if there had been a problem, we wouldn't have been able to get to it to fix it. And, you know, a lot of people, infrastructure like a pump house is something that people ignore until it's not working, because it comes up in your bathroom. And I won't say anymore, but that's what happens. And so, you want us to be able to get there as fast as possible. And if we'd had that truck, we could have resolved that a lot faster than we did. So. Excited to see that come on board. And then I think the last one, believe it or not, is Williamsburg, I know now you wish you'd only given me five minutes. The Williamsburg Library renovation and mechanical system, I just wanted to highlight that, because I just left the Library Board meeting where we were talking about where we are. We're very close to issuing the RFP for this. It will be a design-build PPEA process, which is how we have done the police station and the fire station. We like that process, because it gives so many chances for the City Council and the stakeholders to say yes, no, and maybe to all of the different options that are put before us. But it also allows us to move faster than a traditional design-bid-build process. The other thing that it does is it forces the builder and the architect, the designer, to work together in the beginning, so that when you get ready to pull the trigger, you have a product that can actually be constructed for the number that they have quoted. One of the things that I like about the process is it results much more fast in a guaranteed maximum price contract. And I just like those words, guaranteed maximum price. So that project hopefully will lift off in the next little bit. We're going to solicit some input from City Council and probably the Library Board on what they want to see the design look like, so we can include that in the RFP language, so that the responses that come back reflect what our vision might be, or at least they have the opportunity to. And then we will be able to make really, again, educated decisions about, can we afford this? And I think the major questions are going to be, are the county partners in the library system going to step forward with their funding commitments that was agreed to by the task force that worked on that? There's no indication that they want, but they just haven't made a formal commitment yet by putting it in the budget. And so, we're excited to see how that all comes together. And that really concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
There's a lot I didn't talk about. We can go over it all if you'd like.
I think that was comprehensive enough. Any, any comments, feedback, questions for Mr. Trivett?
Nope.
Well, I will say, I do appreciate your enthusiasm and your thoroughness in putting this, giving us this presentation.
Sure, my pleasure. Yep, I like talking about what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah, your leader, we appreciate your leadership in all of these, in all of these projects, and we understand that things move very slowly. One, one thing that I, that comes to mind as you, as you mentioned, you know, the roundabout and some of these other things, is communication with the residents. And we've, we've got to find a way, you know, other, other than the last word to, to, you know, for people to find out, to be, to be aware, raising the awareness. There's got to be, there's got to be a strategy in this.
Yeah, I mean, we, you all hear it even more probably than we do as the Planning Commission. People come to the podium and say, I just found out about this. And I, you know, in many cases, it's been in every single city publication that we have, it's been on the website. You know, by the time it gets to plant to the City Council, you all have had it for months. I mean, if not years before it comes to a real vote, and still, you land with, this is happening too fast and we just found out about it. And as government, not just Williamsburg, but as government, we have got to figure out how to cross that divide.
And I'm not sure that's something that's going to show up in our letter, but it's not a capital, it may be a capital, I don't know, but it's, it's something that we really have to, because I, I find myself, I think all of us do, you certainly do, defending the city.
All the time.
You know, it's been, that was, that was published five years ago. Well, you know.
Yeah, the police station project is a great example. I mean, you know, we've been working on that for years now. And now that we're near the finish line, there are residents that feel like this is happening all of a sudden and that they had no chance to be a part of the discussion. And, I mean, we spent an entire year evaluating locations for the police station in this room. And yet, there are still people that feel like they didn't have the chance to participate in that decision. So 100% agree with you, we've got to figure out how to solve that, and I don't know what the answer is. Some people would stand at the podium and suggest that we send letters to every resident in the city about every project, every time. And, I mean, how long would it take for you all to start just throwing those away when they came? I mean, it wouldn't take long. So I don't think that's effective either.
Right, thank you, sir. Our next, I did an item as a discussion of, we're not going to go through item by item. The way we typically do this, those of you who have been on the, on the commission for more than a year will remember, we take last year's letter as a, as sort of a blueprint. And we decide, should anything on the letter that was on last year's letter, which I believe you have a copy of, should anything there come off, or do we want to just continue to, to emphasize the things, the recommendations that we have? And then we have some, some additions. And what we, what we typically do with the additions, rather than try to, to write from the DS, we will, we will decide the topic that's going to go in, and then we will ask Ms. Griffin, her staff, to put together some language and email it, and we'll get the language worked out via email for the letter, which we'll then sign the next, at the next, at the next meeting. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Is there anything that, that is on, was on the 2023 letter that anyone believes should, should come off? Okay, there may be some.
School capacity, I mean, is that something that needs to be on there?
I think we need to keep that as a, you know, as a, as a reminder, because it's really more about the perception that we are not funding our schools properly, and that as a, that's, that's a disadvantage in the economic development area, as you, as you know, and bringing, bringing employees in. We hear that at, at William &amp; Mary. My kids are going to be in a, they don't use the word learning cottage, of course, the phrase learning cottage, they use, they use another one. So I, I think we leave that on, just as a, as a reminder, as a point of emphasis. Anything else that should come off before we talk about what we want to add to it?
Well, stormwater management, it says, update the 2014 revision of the Stormwater Management Design Manual.
Right.
Has that been done?
Is that, was that, that's been done, hasn't it?
There is an item in the CIP to do a comprehensive stormwater management plan, a brand-new one, not just update, but a brand-new one. And that's, that's an initiative of the new Public Works Director. If you look at the CIP list this year, there were, there's actually two comprehensive plans for, for, for strategic plans for Public Works, and one of them is stormwater.
Right. So, yeah. So that's, that's a good one, that's a good one to delete. We've, we've talked about broadband, and some of these are continuing, so I think that's, I think that's all right. Okay. So we had some, some suggestions. Mr. Tarly, you had, you had brought up the College Woods Circuit. Do you feel like that's something we need to add?
No, I think that that's in there. I would, I would say with respect to Matthew Whaley to North Henry Street, I think Mr. Trivett said that there wasn't any specificity in there as to what we were referring to. I don't recall this one.
I don't either. I don't, it was not one that I had brought up. Does anyone remember what that, what that was specifically? Okay, let's, let's plan to leave it there, but then we can maybe look back at the minutes and see what, see who, who it was that brought it up and see what, what was there specifically. And if it was.
I can't remember either.
I believe it was.
If it was, if it was, we'll, we'll forgive you or take it out. Okay. The Jamestown Road Corridor, I think is something that, that we've, we've talked about, we've talked about a good bit. And so, we would like to add, Ms. Griffin, a paragraph on that to, you know, study, you know, you know the language. You're the expert, you know the language, but, but study the, the speed there and the road diet, road diet, is that the right?
That's the right word.
Okay, good. What else would we like to add?
That's. That's all that I had notes on.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hamilton, anything, anything to add, Mr.?
Nope.
You hit it with the Jamestown Road Diet.
Yeah.
I thought that.
Big thing. It is, and I, and, and, you know, the, the repaving, I thought was the opportunity, but it got the.
I was optimistic, but it didn't work out.
The paper, the paper was out there, and, you know, nobody had made a decision on that.
Well, as Mr. Trivett said, we could, the striping can be done any, anytime. I think that particular issue was the repaving, and so, the, the size was not going to change.
Yeah, and maybe they can fix that manhole cover.
Oh, man, I wish, I really wish.
All right.
Yes, they will, yeah, they will. Okay, so anything else that we need to add? Okay, so Ms. Griffin, you'll have.
A draft?
Is that enough information for a draft? And if you wanted to send out proposed language for the, for the updates to, to all of us, probably to everyone's city and other business emails, so, so we'll be sure to get it. And then we'll, if you have comments or updates or edits.
We'll do.
We'll get it done by, by the next, by the next meeting. Do you think there will be a February meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there are about four items on that agenda, if not five.
Okay. Would you also check, since we had a discussion about moving the work sessions, which hopefully we won't have too many of this year, to, to 3:30, is that in our bylaws? I'm not sure if that's in the bylaws and we need to.
I believe it's, it's, I will check, but I believe the times, I know the time of the meeting is in the bylaw, so it's probably the time of the work session is there also. I'll check and see how we make that change.
If you could let us know. If you could let us know, and if, if you could, because I think we unanimously said, let's, let's move these, if we have to have another one, to, to, to 3:30. So if we could figure that out and do that as an agenda item, that would be great. Okay, that gets us to our, other, any other discussion? I don't want to cut anybody off.
I just wanted to confirm that our meeting is February 14th.
Your meeting is February 14th at 3:30. It is Valentine's Day. I am open that we changed that, but right now, it's February 14th.
I just, I, I will be out of town, so.
Okay. If we have four things on the schedule, they're probably already planning for?
We have not advertised. We advertise next week. So this is a time to discuss it, if you would like to move it to the next. I believe by the bylaws, you would have to move it to the next day. Yes. So if you move it to the 15th, it could be moved, but if you move it to the next week, it has to be a vote.
Okay.
Have to be what?
A vote. You would have to vote to move it to the next week.
I'm at a conference that week, that whole.
Oh, I'm, yeah, and I'm in, I'm in New York on the 15th, so I can't be here. So we could move it to following week, the 21st, with a vote?
Yes, sir.
And I'll be gone that week, so, be gone that week.
Okay. Preferences, Mr. Granger?
I think if the Chair and the First Vice Chair are going to be out of town, I would love to see it moved.
That would put you, that would put you right on the spot. Okay. What about moving it to just the following week, February 21, Wednesday, February 21, at our regular time? Ms. Lebel will not be here to her happiness.
To my everlasting joy.
You can always call in.
You can phone it in.
I could, and I will be on vacation, so, yeah, I guess I can.
They have phones there. They have phones there.
Well, I have participated from vacation.
Yeah, you have, yeah, yeah, many, many of us, of, of one has. Okay, so what does everyone think about the?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so.
We'll move it, we'll move it to the 21st.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kale?
Aye.
Mr. Tarley?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Ms. Lebel?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
I love it when I don't have to ask for a motion. Okay, that takes us, that takes us to the open forum.